Mr. Daughtry?
Here.
Mrs. Fano?
Here.
Mr. Peralos?
Here.
Mr. Palmer?
Here.
Mr. Petritino?
Here.
Mr. Rappelford?
Here.
And Suckerman? Here.
Here.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provision of the Act, the Montville Township Board of Education provided a public notice of this meeting, which included the time, date, and location that was posted at the Montville Township Municipal Building, all Montville Public Schools, the Montville Public Library, the Montville Township Board of Education Administrative Office Building, the district website, and advertised in the Daily Record, the Board's official newspaper, on January 22, 2023.
Yes, thank you. So just two things real quick and then we get into the board goals. But we've been doing a lot of some work on curriculum as well as buildings. We're about halfway through the summer. A lot of work has been done and we have a lot more to do. We always get the schools open on time, so we're, you know, going to hit that target. But, you know, we're excited about a lot of the progress we make over the summer. The other big announcement is, many of you have seen already, but we have the new website that's up and running. It's been a welcome addition. It's, it's, actually looks just so sharp and it's just beautiful. It's going to be a very easy way to communicate now and a lot of the information is up there. We're going to be updating it on a weekly basis and continuing that over the next couple of weeks. So it'll get fuller and fuller as we go through. It is also easily downloadable and viewable on your cell phone, so that will be a lot easier for a lot of our people to see that information. I just want to thank Sue Brennell, who's here in audience, for all her work on that. And Austin Thompson did a great job. We put a lot of time and effort into that over the past couple of months. So now over the summer, we'll be training a lot of our staff, how to use that, how to update things. But a lot of the people who have already been adding information to the website have said how easy it is. So I think it's going to be cross-platforms and you'll be seeing on Instagram, Facebook, that's all the website and other platforms in a very easy, familiar way. And that's it for that. We're moving to goals. So we had feedback last time for the goals. I took that, all word submitted, everything that everybody gave me, and we put that as a document that I shared with you. It's also as a resolution on page four, so if you need to read that. And so on page four, you'll be able to see sort of the actual particular wording. But we'll just start with the board goals and we can talk about that. Is there any questions that anybody has or if anybody wants to discuss them a little bit? Any kind of changes or anything? We're all good with those, alright? And then we also have the district goals. So the district goals are the goals that the administrators and the teams will be working on. We have four of them this year. Again, those were tweaked based on input from the, from the board at the last board meeting. Any comments or anything of the district goals? Alright, excellent. Alright, so then they'll be on the resolution or comments and a vote for later on this evening. Alright, and the last thing is, I just want to give you an update on the referendum we have on K-14 tonight as a resolution. I just want to explain a little bit of what that resolution is going to entail. This resolution is the first step by the Board of Education for a referendum vote on the projects submitted to the Department of Education, specifically the Office of School Facilities for Review. This resolution outlines the steps that the board has taken. This includes the project for the districts, in a district's long-range facilities plan, submitting the projects for education specifications to the Office of School Facilities for Evaluation, submitting the projects to the Department of Education and funding through debt service aid. The resolution continues to authorize the board president, superintendent, and the school business administrator in conjunction with the bond council to complete the necessary filings for a referendum vote on September 26, 2023. While we had anticipated that the board president, superintendent, and school business administrator, I'm sorry, while we had anticipated that we would receive the final eligibility cost letters by this meeting, we are still waiting on them from the state. Based on the statutory deadlines for September 26 deadline of the special election, these letters need to be received by the August 22, 2023 meeting so that second resolution can then be approved. Tonight's resolution allows us to move forward with regulatory filings without specifying the exact dollar amount. The second resolution in August will identify the exact wording for the ballot, including the portion to be raised by, for the taxes. The August 22 resolution will be the final approval for the resolution of the referendum. So tonight, we are going to be asking you to vote on this resolution that's going to push this forward to the county so that we can move all the paperwork moving forward so that we can be ready for September 26 vote. And we are expecting the final letters from the state any day now, taking part in telling us, but we should have them in time for the August 22 board meeting, which will then finalize our numbers as well as the exact wording that we'll be putting on the referendum. And that's all I have.
Anyone that have a discussion about any of this? Christina, you mentioned something to me earlier.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. I do, in section 5, the date of September 26 for the voting, my concern is if we only get the numbers, hopefully, on August 22, it does not, it only gives us really a little bit more than 30 days to share that to the public. The cost breakdown, you know, one of the meetings when it was going to be $400 and change, or $500,000 and change home, but that's for 25 years, that payment, plus our regular Board of Education, you know, what the community has to pay, the taxes, and then the towns with, all the taxes are going up in the town. I just feel like, I feel like the community just needs to know the numbers and it needs to be shared more. I know the students and the parents, people in the community, in our school community, know, because you've been wonderful about communicating to all of them, the PTAs, but it's the outsiders. Because I get so many questions about what's going on with this referendum, how much it's going to cost, and I don't really have the numbers for them. So how are we going to reach out to really the entire community in 30 days? So for me, I almost feel more comfortable going an extra 30 days, maybe having that vote in October, if that's all you can.
If we back, next vote would be in December.
Oh, that's what I meant. I apologize. It's having the vote.
So either September 26 or December, first or second meeting, December. Yes. But you, you're well dated and we have been putting out the estimates of 410 on the average household with, based on what your tax assessment is on your house. So we vote exact that number, but we believe our number is going to be pretty close to that.
And I think we're meant to probably hire to consult. Everybody, notify every homeowner in town, the information, email plans, everything else.
Correct. So we're reaching out. We have a committee, a communications committee that's made up of over 20 people from the community, all different people from different, people that have graduated, people involved in town, people that have kids in the system right now. They're going to be meeting for the first time next week, coming up with that whole communications plan, and we'll be rolling that in the next couple of weeks, blasting everything out through social media and everything else. So it's going to be coming pretty fast in the next couple of weeks.
You had mentioned in one of our previous meetings that you all want to assure about what's happened with the pilot program and what's coming in. Do you know if any new information regarding those funds will be available by, by this meeting?
No, I don't have any information on that.
Right. That's not our, it doesn't affect us. We have.
It does affect us because it does affect the tax number that he's going to estimate for our box number. So I just wanted to know if there was any new information in that area that could affect the.
Pilots are going to have no bearing on the tax impact. That's the whole idea of the pilot, is that there is no tax income coming in. So where we are, let's just say the town is worth a billion dollars, with or without the pilots, it's still worth a billion dollars. That's, sorry.
Has there been any progress made in communication with the town and to be able to do it in a way? And getting some of that money?
You did have one session.
Yeah, a while ago. But as far as any new discussions, no, there's not many new discussions. Can I go on to this meeting?
So, I'm sorry.
Why, Michelle, don't break me.
So a couple things. Right, so understanding that there's no obligation to town to share any of the pilot comes with us, so we can't assume that that be coming. I guess, in terms of what Christina's saying, the 410 per, if at the August meeting, it comes very close to the number we've been putting out, I do feel, I guess differently in that that number has been communicated effectively for some time in a lot of ways and it shouldn't be a surprise. If it's way off from that, then I think a different discussion would have to happen. And then the other part of it is, I've asked this question and I just want to make sure the way I'm understanding it is correct, the advantage to September referendum over to December, first and foremost from what we're trying to do perspective, is it gives us that extra three months we need to get the bid and to start the planning and to be able to do the work. And that three months could impact, you know, if we're going, if we're going to support putting it out there and the information is out there, my understanding is that three months can make a difference, which is one of the reasons why we've been trying to do this. So I just want to see if, you know, it's accurate.
You're correct, you're accurate.
Yes, it's the difference between us beginning to break ground for next summer and breaking ground, ground next fall. So we would lose the advantage of the summer and the ability to flow freely in the buildings. That is the benefit of us doing construction projects during the summer because there are no students present. That's not to say that there wouldn't be construction occurring during the school year, but we would not have as much free rein as we have during the summer.
And could you also speak to the 410 on the average assessed value of the home and how likely it is that that number is going to be close, our final number will be close or far away? What's likely to happen?
It appears right now, based on the PEC letters, assuming that the FEC letters are going to be comparable, that the number is going to be right in that same range. It's going to be right around a 410. Now, again, the reason why we hold off on speaking with any authority on that number until that 4, until the FEC letters are issued is because anything can change. But based on what we've been through so far with the PECs, the preliminary eligible cost letters, we do anticipate that the final eligibility cost letters are going to be comparable.
Any other questions?
So one more thing, approving this now, we have a chance in August if the number do not come back what we expect, to basically change that. Correct. So if we came back in, at the meeting on the 22nd of August and the number was 510, let's just say, at that point, you have the ability to then indicate that you will not be moving forward for September due to the fact that the number came in higher than you had planned. And I would guess you would be looking at the projects and deciding to possibly scale back in order for that number to become a different number if that's the direction you're going. But you would have that ability in August to make that determination if that's what you wanted to do.
If this were to, the board, we're just decided on September 20, if the referendum passes, great, we have a nice plan of action forward. If the referendum did not pass, what would be the board's next steps to address the population issue?
Well, we would have to reconvene and then start talking about, you know, what do we want to do? Would you want to go out for another referendum the following year or even in March or something like that, you know, and then scale it back? Do you want to, there's not too many other contingency plans except for large class hours.
That's kind of across my question. What would be the earliest we could go out with a new plan?
If, if you go out for September and it got shot down, there is a slight change for maybe mid-March for a referendum. But if you go for December, I don't know if you'd have enough turnaround time to get to March.
It would really depend on how fast you can move. I mean, if you could move fast enough to make a turn, you could move pretty fast. If you could move and make a change in October, then you could make a December referendum in theory. I don't know if you really could do it that fast because keep in mind, in order for us to do that, now, if you now think back to when we originally submitted all of our stuff down to Trent, we did it in 24 projects that were packaged into 18 little groups. And the reason we did that was the ability to kind of swap stuff that we needed to. So now that you would get the letters, the letters still stand even if you don't have a passing referendum in September. If you could go and say, well, alright, I know exactly what we would pull out. We would pull out numbers 3, 7, and 12. We pull those out, we come up with a new number, we figure out the new tax impact. You already have approval from the state of New Jersey and that still stands. Now what you would do is repackage it to say, okay, it's only going to include instead of 18 little packages, it only includes 15 little packages because you pulled out three. And if you could move fast enough to do all those things, I guess theoretically, it is possible you could make it to September.
We have, yeah, but we have to be careful because we might have to even check with the architect again to see if costs have found help since the last testament. So I haven't seen them going down, so we have to be careful about that.
I have a question regarding communication to the public. I know she's going to be using social media and I'm sure tapped into Montville and other resources. I'm wondering, is there any thought to, because we do have a lot of senior citizens that, you know, are not on social media, if we could do a mailer out to people?
We will. We'll do a mailer at the, towards the end, you know, probably before the vote. We're also going to put a link on the town website where people are going to access it that way. We'll have it on our website, we'll do a mailer, and then we'll do social media. And for people that are not in our district, that are not part of our community with having kids in the system, there's a number of people that have signed up for constant contact, so that's how we get to a lot of those people.
And everybody will get notification.
Correct. Everybody will be notified, yes. Through the, through. Correct. Whoever, you have to get a mailer in town, absolutely.
Okay, are there any other questions? Over to Ron.
No report.
Okay, section G, is that committee reports, finance facilities?
Yeah, we met right before tonight's meeting. We did talk a little bit about the referendum, sort of just finishing touches, and we went over what's on tonight's agenda. We talked a little bit about rental fees for the 23, 24 school year and that those revisions and possible, possibly more revisions. We had a really good update with regards to the construction projects going on, and that's it.
Kurt, come on.
Michelle, no report.
Policy, Joe. Policy met, like, earlier in the month to discuss, do you have changes to policies in your first meeting?
Yeah, we do have a first reading for Red Sess teams, and we did through, through email to the committee, we do those, so that's set for one today because that has to be in place for September 1st. We just have the policy update two weeks ago. So the goal would be first reading tonight and ideally the second reading in August and have it in place for September 1st.
Mike, come on, communication.
No report, I'm just wondering if they do the, I'm thinking, referendum might be appropriate to schedule meeting.
Your internal, one, one?
Yep. You know, just talk about that after leaving.
Okay, safety, Mike.
No report.
Okay. No, WDA's on, it's towards Karen.
I just wanted to look forward, no, that on Thursday, I'll be participating in a Department of Education sponsored panel discussion regarding graduation assessment requirements. One of the panel will consist of representatives from a variety of educational related associations, and I'll report back after I've attended.
Okay, Morris County School Board, Michelle.
No report. I hope you've talked to them though about the meetings that are set up for the fall.
And Joe, Morris County Educational Services.
No report.
And stay there, park awareness.
No report either.
Okay. Charlie, Montville Clinic Service.
No report.
Yeah. Before we get into public participation, let me just say, we had graduation recently and move-up ceremony at the middle school, and that being my first time in this role, I was ecstatic about it. I mean, to see the look on those kids' faces when they walk up to receive their diplomas with, it's a huge moment in their lives and just to see the joy and the light inside of them, it was really uplifting and it was a wonderful ceremony, we had the letter on the grid, and even Lozard with a nice airway, doing quite a lot of handshakes, but an air horn, and what, the air horn, and everyone with that, yeah, everything, something. Anyway, congratulations to everyone who graduated as well as moving up to the high school. I would wish you the best of luck. So public participation, anyone wishing to address the board, please come up to the microphone, state your name, address, and your comments. Monica?
Hi, my name is Zaid Kapralos, K-A-P-R-A-L-O-S. I live in Nine Garrity Terrace of Pine Brook, New Jersey. Obviously. I just really quickly want to, it's my first time in the meeting of the Board of Education. I am in education myself, in higher education. I'm very invested because we lived in this community for five years and my daughter is now starting kindergarten this year, I'm very excited. So I was at the last meeting and this is, my question is regarding the referendum, and I have one small question about the curriculum only because I'm new. My concern is, I started, I first want to say that I, I wholeheartedly support what each and every one of you are doing here. I think my strike and all of the community's strike is surrounding the fact that the Township Planning Board has made a decision about these expansions and the development, and it just seems like this is now the primary source of stress on our school districts. And it's very unfair for the residents of this town to have to brunt the entire burden of this taxation because we recently received another card from the town telling us our taxes are going up yet again because they're fixing roads. This is all very understandable, right? We live in a community, we have to support our community. But we just want to make sure there's transparency and there's also the ability to identify the problem, not just focus on fixing the problem. Because from my perspective, and I could be wrong because I don't know all of the ins and outs of how the town works in tandem with this board, but I feel like they created a problem, dumped it in this board's lap, and basically said, you fix it, you get the money, you do it. And I think that you're getting a lot of anger or questions from the community that is not based towards you, but I think it's based because of the source of what, where this problem generated. So I, somebody just said during the meeting that you are not speaking with the town or they're not speaking with you. I personally believe that people should be working in tandem with this to try and figure out how the town is supporting the school district and the Board of Education because we are, right, the school district, the Board of Education is a proxy of the town, it's the people, it's the children, it's the community members that we're providing. So I looked at the, some data online by myself, I wasn't able to find the report. I know that Dr. Borman presented some data, I wasn't able to find it on the website, that just could be because I couldn't find it. But I looked by myself and one of the things that was stated was basically the increase in the birth rate. There's an increase in the birth rate in Morris County, but if you look at the birth rate of Montville, as far as what I found in 20, up to 2022, there has not been any increases. It has been decreased or the same. And if the board would like, I have a copy here, I can share with you. I haven't had a chance, but I'm working myself to go through and do some extensive data, but I would love to see that report if it's possible, if there's some version to see where the source of data is. Being in education, I understand that data is there. How you analyze data, that's the rub, right? That's the trick, that you have to understand what that data means in order to truly understand what the impact of it is. So I'm worried personally, I have concerns because I feel like the town, and this is not obviously your responsibility because like you said, this is entirely your control, but how do we get the town to work with you, to have accountability? They're the ones that made the decision about approving this development. I'm not going to get into that issue, that's a hot topic. So what are they doing now because all of this influx of people coming in is negatively impacting our schools? So you're dealing with base issues of just crowding, of the deterioration of your resources, and you're trying to renew them. And I think every citizen in this town would support that. But I think under the circumstances, people are angry, they're upset, and there's a lot of questions. So I understand the timing of the referendum of what you were speaking about. I think it's a great idea to try and push it earlier so you have that wiggle room to be able to reroute, you know, pivot and figure out what you can do. But my concern would also be, are we rushing to present this to people when on the foundation, they're angry? They're not angry at you, they're angry at the town, they're angry at the reason why we need this extra money to build new schools, to build new classrooms, to do all these things. So I think if you didn't have that overshadowing your goals, which are very meritorious, right, I think we probably have a better outcome for the referendum. And my second thing, on a lighter note kind of, with regard to the curriculum, with the new law that has been passed by Phil Murphy, by Governor Murphy, regarding the introduction of LGBTQ plus curriculum to younger students, is there anywhere that I could go to as a parent to see what the curriculum is and how Montville is implementing it and speaking to other people from other districts? Every district is implementing it a different way. And I was just curious to find out, how can I as a parent just find out what my child is going to be, you know, exposed to when she gets to school? That's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, I appreciate your comments.
Is there, is there anyone else who would like to speak today? Okay, I suppose, public participation.
So, yeah, so thank you for those comments, I appreciate it, and they were very well articulated. Just real quick about the curriculum, it is on the website, but if you want to send me your email, I'll point you directly to the right spot. And this boot print can actually help you a little bit more if you had a specific question about that after you, you dived through some of that data. I could also send you some of the information of where you can find the demographic information and information about the referendum, specifically on the website. We do have the raw data on there that shows the predictions of the next five years, and that shows you that birth rate is actually, so you are correct, it was going down, but now, the next five years is showing a definite decrease. We also had a number of people move in post-COVID, that also showed a huge influx of number of people moving in on top of the developments. So all told, we're looking at, and just at the elementary schools, about 410 students that are not going to be, that we need to find in on the spot for them. So the data is there and we can show you all the projections.
And I think you can send her the AC URLs for the, for the, you can take a look. But, you know, it's not just that those big developments, it's also a lot of organic growth in the town which is driving the need for more state center.
Sue's going to help me out in a second too, and then I, but she'll capture, give somebody your email, and then I'll, I'll reach out to you as well.
Okay, so Tom, before we get to the second resolution, do you want to make some changes?
Yes. So we have just two minor changes on the agenda tonight. So on page eight, K-82, middle column there, the number is actually going to be reduced to zero, and the dollar figure is going to be reduced to $10,000. That's K-2. And on page 10, N-112, it's going to be $0 instead of the $75. Two changes.
So, is that a moment? So, just a moment. Second. Okay, item I, the minutes, any questions? J. K, any questions? I think we talked about K-14, let's see, any other questions? Okay, section L, personnel. M, curriculum. Any questions on the curriculum? No. N, policy?
No problem.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Cortolino?
Yes.
Mr. Daughtry?
Yes.
Mrs. Fanna?
Yes, but I'm staying on section I, the minutes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Petrosino?
Yes.
Mr. Rappaport?
Yes.
Mrs. Gumpman?
Yes.
Dr. Bogdrak?
Yes.
Section, closed, section, there won't be a closed session. Q, old business? Any old business? New business? Are there general board comments?
I just want to welcome you to Montville Township. It's great to have new parents come and meet with the Board of Education. I'm sure all my colleagues appreciate you coming.
But it's okay. My problem, yeah.
You're welcome here anytime. We encourage people to come here, we really do. Okay, so speaking of parents and people, our last public participation section. Anything you want to say at all, not necessarily on the agenda? Any other comments? No? Okay, and then, closed.
Second.
Okay, have a good night, everyone, see you August 22nd.